I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America, with its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let the roll call show all board members are present except for Eric Minx.
Eric Stramberg.
Eric Stramberg, sorry. Oh, it's been a long day. We have a spirit showcase, maybe not.
You know, I apologize, Madam Chair, our showcase was students from high school that were going to provide an update and some information on that amazing Respect Retreat that they had at the high school. And we will try and reschedule them because it was a snow day and everything kind of got thrown off. They were not able to make it. So we'll reschedule.
All right, sounds good. There are no citizen comments, so we will move on to Board Member Committee reports. We'll start with Jen.
The Policy Committee just met. First experience was a successful hour, I think.
It always is.
Love it. And not to interrupt, but if, because we're just coming off of the MSBA trainings, if there's any exciting things to that people want to share from that experience, you'd be great to do so. Lots of good things that we learned there, too.
Is that all?
Yes.
Okay.
I had no meetings today other than just our MSBA conference and our last speaker, the one thing I wanted to share, like, well, there was a lot of, he was really good. But there's one thing I wanted to share that he said that I wrote down is that we fail our students when we standardize them. And I just thought that that's a good thing for us all to keep in mind, and especially as we help our career academies and all that. I think we do a good job of trying not to standardize them, but just something to keep in mind.
You had a lot of good outliers.
Yeah, I like to delete Snapchat because it kind of makes you sound big.
All right, here.
No, no, many meetings, but I did attend the MSBA conference last week. That was good.
Okay, Don.
I attended the MSBA training one and two, and then the conference last week. We had agenda planning and then policy meeting for this tonight.
All right, Scott.
Policy meeting today along with Jen and Don. Attended MSBA last week. The most interesting session I attended was on student attendance. That was a good thing to hear. We did have that wellness meeting that got canceled, but.
All right, thank you. I attended the task force meeting and had agenda planning and the MSBA conference. Yeah, you guys were at the task force meeting.
I was at the training, which I forgot. Wait, attended again.
Morgan, Student Council.
Student Council is right now planning our snow days dance. Our theme right now is Candyland, which is gonna be fun, kind of, you know, piggybacking off of, because it's on the 13th, so we're piggybacking off of like Valentine's Day. And then we're still planning dress up days. January is self-love month, so we put post-its with encouraging messages on the mirrors in the school bathrooms. So people can just take one of the thingy, a little bit of encouragement. One act, we had our public performance last Friday, which went really well. And then we have a festival on Saturday, which is super fun, and we got the Gold Academic Award. And then Subsections is home this Saturday. And then the Mississippi Conference Band and Choir Music Festival was last night, and that was hosted at Princeton in Le Gym, and that was really cool to watch, like, all the schools, like, sing and like play a bunch of instruments, and that was very fun. There was like jazz band, and that was awesome. And then, as a 10th grader, I did attend the Respect Retreat, and I thought it was an amazing experience. I loved it so much. It was so fun. And the guys who led it kept you, like, doing stuff, but also engaged when he would just had you sit down and listen to him talking, and it was just really good, and I hope we continue to do that, because I pulled a lot out of it. And I hope, I mean, it kind of stinks that half my grade skipped school, so they didn't have to go to it. And I wish everyone had gone to it, because it was really a good experience. And I think all the 10th grade classes coming into the high school should keep doing that, because it's really good.
Awesome. Well, it'll help for you to give that good review to your, to the now ninth graders, so that they know it's not a date to miss.
No, it was worth it.
As you. All right, super kind of.
So, you know, just expanding on that a little bit, that was born out of kind of our desired frustration that we had some missing pieces to our recipe as it relates to like our climate culture, right? You know, we have a pretty robust, continuous improvement plan with desired outcomes. Strong PBIS as kind of our foundation, building in lots of of our habits of a tiger in our curriculum and instruction. Building in lots of our restorative practices and some of those things, but we're still having some, some issues, right? And so, like, what, pleased with what we're doing, but not satisfied. What are some more things that we can continue to look at? You know, the student experience side of things, where it was some areas that we thought that we can improve in. And I've had a lot of friends with Youth Frontiers over the years. It's expensive. You know, we did, we did invest in that as a district. I, I think that I want to continue that, and I think we should, but the one also thing, the thing I should think we need to do is to partner with other entities in our community, because I think that the the values associated with each of those retreats as a kindness retreat or a respect retreat or a courage retreat are things that are cross boundaries in other community associations, right? Even other faith-based organizations, right? I mean, we certainly are gonna bring faith into the retreat, but the values are still the same. And I think that would be something that if we could get more of our community to kind of buy in, and and that's why I was telling lots of people, like, go check this out, right? The other piece that's, that makes it more powerful is if we go offsite. And that gets a little tricky, too, because, you know, where do you, where do you have large locations in our, in our community that isn't the school, right? So a lot of times we're looking at other churches and some of their spaces. And that's what we did. So the other piece that we, that's new this year is the Voices Training that we are doing with some staff development. Speaking of staff development, yesterday was a very productive day. I was just proud of the work that, that our staff embarked in yesterday. We had some great speakers. One of the speakers that I think was the, the most well-received was associated with student motivations. You know, and just some really good strategies, and we had a gentleman that's written a book in the blogs, and he's a teacher in Michigan, which I think he had a lot, a lot more street credibility with our teachers because he is a teacher. And, you know, that was, you know, very powerful. I had an opportunity to go with some of our board members through Phase Two training last week, and that's something that, you know, I always, you always, when you do this a long time, you kind of forget things over. So these are nice little reminders, like, oh yeah, gotta make sure that we're doing all of those things, so. That was good, and it was great to attend the training, which our board, and thankful that everyone went. I said, I think that that is just super meaningful and powerful, and I can't tell you how many superintendents I talked to said, you know, I'm pretty jealous, because you got all your board members here, and a lot of them might get one or two, right? And so I think that's pretty cool. I think all of you are aware that we had a Incliment Weather Day today, which is always brings lots of complexities to that. I did, I did change, I have been kind of evolving in my way of thinking with that, and we did open school back up once the weather did get better, and I'm glad that we did that. And I didn't, I didn't get any pushback, because I do think that people were, were, were looking at that logically. And I'm still worried about transportation. We still don't have a mechanic, which, you know, sometimes when it gets really cold out, you, you know, you're not quite as competent in those buses running without mechanics when it's that cold, so. Just a small update on the task force. We had a very creative meeting last Tuesday, a smaller turnout, but probably some of our best discussions. I did send a follow-up email to that group, and I also did send a communication out to all of our team members in the district, so they had an opportunity to go through that priority piece, so that will be just some additional data. I do have a meeting set with Peter Leatherman on Friday to go over some preliminary survey results. And I've invited some of our cabinet members to that, so that we can see where we're at, and I have absolutely no idea, right? So it's gonna be nervous but exciting, and I guess we'll see. I am meeting with the two chairs of that committee, Amy and Sue. I think tomorrow we have something on the books to plan for next week. Next week's task force will consist of three major areas. One is results of the survey, to kind of give us the pulse of the community in terms of support, level of support or now of support for possible tax implications. We do have Jody from elders coming to share, you know, what tax impact would be on a bond, a tax levy, and a possible operating referendum. And what's the third piece? Oh. We should be able to have some ballpark ideas on costs associated with some of the priorities that the group came up with. So it will somewhat start coming together because we're gonna, because the group somewhat identified the top three, four, five priorities. We, we'll have some numbers put on what that potentially could cost. We'll be able to match that up with the tax implications from elders, and then we'll be able to match that up with what the community said they may or may not be able to support. And then we'll have to wrestle with all of those complexities and analyze that, synthesize that, and have ongoing conversations. Yes.
Did you, or would you want anyone from our public engagement community at the deal with the chairs, when last time when we were, did the leather, the Leatherman survey thing, I feel like one of us there, Jen?
Well, I, you'll definitely see it. I mean, this is just kind of a preliminary.
A discussion about doing the surveys, maybe that's what I'm thinking that we were at.
Yeah, I, I, you know, if a board member wants to sit in that, I'm not gonna argue with that, but I, I do kind of want to have an opportunity to see it and and digest a little bit of that.
That's what you're gonna be presenting Tuesday.
Yeah. So I think what I'll do is in my commentary, unless the group has any additional questions.
Any other questions for Ben? All right, we'll move on to approve the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, one last thing, and I, I just think it's important to say. We, we moved about four years ago to keeping Tiger Club open on Incliment Weather Days, and that was somewhat controversial, right? But I'm super glad we did it. I had an opportunity to go over there today, and you know, we had an opportunity just to help, you know, 30 to 40 families. It's not a ton, but still, right? Where else are their children gonna be able to go on Incliment Holiday Day? So just wanted to make that one. Thank you, Chair.
Ben was busy over there today.
That was cool.
All right, we'll move on to approve the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Some of the motions been made by Melissa. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Second by Eric Minx. Any comments or questions on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. Discuss an act on previous board meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes as presented? Motion's been made by Eric Minx. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Jen. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes are approved consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
It's all moved.
Motion's been made by Don. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved, and we are on to budget parameters.
That was cool. You ready for it, Sash?
Sure. Enrollment. Every year, we look at enrollment at this time of year. We look at it multiple ways. This year is our first year of using the elders model that we purchased for use. And so instead of seeing an Excel sheet there, you now say, see an elders two-year average on the 2425, which is showing our total enrollment for the district K-12 to be about 3,135 at the end of the year, because remember, we're looking at the end of the school year is what we get paid on. The way that I've looked at it for many, many years, that September to year-end average, I'm coming up with about 3,146, and then we do some grade analysis, which the average there is also at 3,145, and then we've got a high and a low. And low would suggest that we're losing kids as we speak, and would end up more like at 3,110. And then if we're gaining students at a high rate, and that has happened in the district in the last number of years, that we've gained more or we've lost more during the school year than we, we would have liked. We always like to gain them, but we don't like to lose them. So that gives us an average of 3,153 for all those categories. But for the base of our 2425 estimate, I went between the middle of elders and the total average, so about 3,145 is gonna be our base for planning for 2526. Then we move that into the elders models, and I looked at two different ways on their model, the three-year average, which is showing us at 3,101. And it's showing us with a two-year weighted average at 3,106, so they're pretty relatively close. And then we've got the grade analysis and at the average, the low and the high, which gives us a total average between all those areas of 3,083. If you go down where it says kindergarten estimates, so elders model is showing with, which is just county birth rates, is 266. So ours is gonna show the county birth rates plus people who have moved in and have called us or were aware of. So that's probably why we're off about 20 kids. Either way, it's not a lot. We'd like to see that total be well over 300, because if you're bringing in 70% of them, gives you a bigger number, but each of those areas shows you what our kindergarten number is. And then just looking at, you know, what our options are, we always throw out the low, you know, we're, we're not gonna plan for 111 down. Can't say it won't happen, because it has happened to us. We actually don't show any numbers, though, that are showing us positive, which some years we do see that. So we just, Jason and I were talking, we just threw out two ideas, the 3,085 being down 60 kids or being down 44, 45 kids. Or other, we're gonna ask the board to give us that guidance at our next board meeting in February, our first board meeting in February, where we will ask you to tell us which number you're comfortable with. Finance Committee with Eric and Deb, you got comments on your thoughts there?
I think we were talking about minus 44, wasn't we? Because now, these numbers don't include Princeton Online, right?
Yes, they do.
They do include.
They, they, they include it for what they are right now.
Yes.
But they don't include, like, what we can predict for the future. Like, we don't know.
It would change our average of it, then.
Well, it isn't.
But it's only been one, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have, we've just got this year, so there's, there's no moving, movement for up or down, so it's just showing the historical of our, it, it comes down to our kindergarten and our graduating class.
Yeah. So basically, yeah.
Prepare for her.
Because that census number for kindergarten is pretty low.
Yes. That, that's where that 45.
That's scary.
Yeah. Yep. And which, you know, the developments in that area posing as what we need to bring in for families, so.
Which, you know, thankfully, we're seeing more things moving and shaking in that area than we have in the seven years I've been here. But, I mean, just being conservative, you can't, we can't, you know, assume anything.
We had the hockey guy come talk to it. When does that stuff start, those building projects?
Well, yeah, the development, they've been stalled a little bit. And I got an email just yesterday that says, no, everything's kind of settled, and he should have a detailed timeline for me for next week. But he's told me that a couple other times, too, so I'll just keep you posted.
Okay.
I mean, thankfully, we don't, we don't have a huge sense of urgency. That has happened now. We just want to see it done. So we'll get more information.
Right. Does anybody have any questions for Michelle on enrollment or Don's thoughts?
I, I just say the board is, we need something to start with. I mean, this is a town of parameters that you give us that we work, start working with. If there are new developments, new information, then we bring it to you, and then you can modify that number, and then we would modify what we're doing.
And we've always been pretty conservative when we.
Yes.
So.
Yep.
All right, then the other parameter, the next parameter is the state formula increase and what I call the scales, any other state changes that affect funding. This is our first year where we're in the floor of 2%. And with max of 3% based on, I believe, it's CPI. And I called up Randy at elders, and Randy asked him his opinion on where we, we should land there. And he is indicating 2.4% at this juncture, but that also can be updated by the time we meet next. But at the moment, it is not at 2%, it is slightly above that 2%. And I don't know if it'll reach the 3% or not.
What we're recommending to the board is we use that 2.4. I, I don't think we should assume that the legislature will add anything other than what is already there.
I think we go on to the class size piece, which Jason will take over.
Yeah, so each year I put together at least somewhat of a prediction of where we're at with our student enrollment based on grade level. So if you pull up in the 2526 class size finance, what it shows on the top box is where we currently are as of January 1, with our total number of students per grade level, the total number of sections, our Spanish immersion sections, and then what our averages are. It also shows the guidelines as to where we try to be within for class size range. The next box down then shows moving those class sizes up one level, so moving our first graders to be second graders and so on, and then putting in a prediction for K. Each year, obviously, we try to use the prediction that is given to us. Unfortunately, our K numbers have been declining over the last few years with a prediction of somewhere around 185 for this upcoming school year. The nice thing is, last year, we were kind of in that same boat, where we thought that's about where we were gonna be. We ended up with a little over 200. Ideally, you know, we'd love to be in that 250 range, because that's where our senior and upper classes are currently at. But the new reality is, is we're gonna be closer to that 200 range. Next year's K classes is small. The year after that, based on birth rate, we do go back up around that 330 range for students. Hopefully, they stay in the area and we're able to draw them in, but that is something we take a look at. Then I start breaking down the numbers and trying to figure out where we're at with staffing, so there's some possible suggestions as to what, you know, being down one staff member in each of those grade levels looks like. Technically, we could go down pretty much one staff member in each grade level and still stay really close to our parameters, with the exception of fifth grade, where we're gonna probably need to add one of our teachers. So if you move a fourth grade teacher to a fifth grade, it's no reduction, it's just a movement of a staff member. So we overall are probably gonna look somewhere between, based on numbers and financially how we end this year, we'll need to look somewhere between probably one to four teaching staff in our elementary, could be a reduction. With our Spanish immersion, again, that is a program we're gonna need to really take a look at, because if we only have 185 kindergartners, typically, we've got, we've tried to get about 40 to 50 kids in that program. Well, that would be like one out of every three, one out of every four. That's a very high percentage. One of the things we're gonna really wanna take a look at is how do we manage that program, because it is good for our, our system and our district, and yet, and keep it with some integrity, but also not put us in a situation where we're struggling to fill our English sections, because we're, we're out of students. Moving into the middle area then is the middle school, where we currently are, where we're projected to be. We'll be down about 29 total students in grades six through eight, which, if we keep our average student ratio, which right now are all of our adults in our middle school compared to our students, is about a 20 to 1 ratio. To keep that same ratio, we'd be down about one teaching staff in our middle school.
Just a little point of information on middle school, though, and, and Jason, you'll be doing lots more work with the middle school administration, and I will, too. But they're going through a whole process, and Sarah's leading this as it relates to kind of their own little mini task force there on scheduling, and what is, what do we want that middle school experience to look like? And it, you know, it's, it has to morph. They've been trying to swit, fit a square into a round hole kind of a deal to try and keep a model that they created, you know, 10, 20 years ago, with a lot more students. And with the lesser students, it just is not, we're not able to sustain that model. Therefore, you know, we have to change quite a few things. So we're gonna be trying to push them a little bit to to give us some recommendations on where that might land.
Yep. With our high school staff, again, taking a look totally numbers, we're gonna stay pretty flat with where we are, actually, maybe even increasing our high school enrollment in the actual brick and mortar building. Again, some prediction of maybe having 20 PSEO students in 11th grade, 20 in, in senior high or 12th grade gets us, again, real close to that same number, so holding the staff that we have there, being as efficient as we can with our scheduling, and you know, we just never know what's gonna happen with our online programming, whether that be at the high school level, obviously, this is the first year with our K-8 programming, and so we're continuing to grow. We're around 105 students right now in our K-8 online programming. There's some bigger recruiting type option, opportunities that are coming up, so we're hoping those numbers will continue to grow. Those numbers, obviously, will help them offset some of the other costs throughout the district, so. We're hopeful that our programming is quality, in the fact that it'll draw more online families to us in the future, so. That's our class sizes. The other document that's in there is our class size ranges. We increased those a year ago to the numbers there, the 19 to 22, 20 to 24, and so on. Comparing to other districts around the area, we still are definitely on the lower side with our top end caps, our top end guidelines. Many of the schools are in the mid-30s. Many of the schools are in the mid thirties, uh, their middle school, high school, and then um, upper. Twenties, low thirties in their upper elementaries, and so. Uh, while these are guidelines, we try to stay close to them. We're gonna need to probably be more on the upper end of our guidelines over the next. Year, year and a half versus being on the lower end where we've been typically in the past.
I have a question. Can you explain the, and the primary and the. Yeah, the primary intermediate, like all those Spanish sections, but what are they? Like you've got the one and then there's sometime, there's the numbers in parentheses and there's like a one point.
So, so that's the number of staff we have allocated, so like. On the very top one there, um, we have two sections, they're twenty-three and twenty-two.
Right.
In first grade, we have a section and a half because we have one section in first grade, one section in second grade, and then one combination for second grade. So we have one set, our first graders that are at twenty-four, we have one set of second graders that are at twenty-four. And then the remaining twelve kids in each grade level are put together to have that first second grade combination class. With our intermediates, um, third grade, right now we have two sections at twenty-one and twenty. And then a section of twenty-seven and a section of twenty-nine. Unfortunately, what we've. The trend has been that we do lose kids along the way, whether it's they're moving out or maybe not. Seeing what they were hoping to get out of it. And again, I think that comes back to making sure that the beginning of the process, when we're looking at our K and our one. Students that they understand that, you know, this is a commitment, this is gonna look different than a traditional type classroom. And uh, in the past, we've usually ended up getting into that thirty-five to forty range, and then we start recruiting kids. And anytime you go to recruit a kid, you never know if what their motivation then is to stay or not stay. And we unfortunately have seen numbers up and down uh, as we continue to move through the system. Um, ideally, yeah, I would love to have twenty, you know, twenty-five, thirty kids in K and they stay there all the way through eighth grade. But priorities change, kids move, kids move. We, this year, we were fortunate, we did have a couple of kids move in to first grade that were Spanish. Uh, speaking actually, and so we were able to slide that right into that Spanish immersion class, um. You know, it, it is a draw for some families, um.
What is the, the section that's taken out at the bottom?
So that is if we were looking to um, make a reduction within Spanish immersion to go to one section of K. For next year.
Okay.
So then we'd probably be looking at more like a thirty, a section of thirty kindergarteners, knowing that we're gonna have a teacher, we're gonna have a parent professional and probably an amity in there. And so we'd have three staff members working with the thirty kids in hopes that as we move into first grade, we keep twenty-eight. To thirty of them. Granted, they'll need some supports, but. We have had uh, some difficulty in allocating staff or finding staff that are bilingual. That are US citizens. So we do work with Amity International, we also work with um. Uh, Department of Education in getting exchange teachers. Most of them are on a three-year visa, and so they're here for three years and then they leave. And. If they're great staff, remember, we don't want them to leave, and in fact, we've actually been able to keep a couple of them here. Yep, they're keepers. Um, some of them unfortunately, yeah, have gone back to their home countries earlier. Because their home country said, nope, you were there for a year, we need you back in our country. Yeah, so it depends a lot on where they're coming from, um.
So are all the one and a halves, is that, is that saying that like, so that would be like a two?
Probably a combination.
Like a one, two, a two, three?
Uh, probably a one, two of twenty-seven and then a three, four of twenty-five.
So we wouldn't be trying to do the two?
Try not to do across buildings because again, you have kids that are second graders that. Want to experience second grade, and we have third graders that don't necessarily want to stay back in the primaries if they're a third grader. So we do have to look at those numbers a little bit differently and try to, try to make them work as best they can. It's a puzzle, whether it be our admin building the master schedule or whether it be looking at individual kids. Um, this is always a puzzle and these are recommendations, these are not set in stone to say, hey, we're, this is the way we're going to do it.
Right, do we have any feedback, I mean, the, on the one, two class that's at the primary right now, I mean, I've. Been physically in there and it seems to be going really well. They seem like I have a flow, but I didn't know if there was any kind of feedback on any of that yet, or?
Uh, I would have to talk with Shannon, I, uh, or Andrea. I don't know, I have not, I have not. Not hearing things is good, but also I'm not out there seeking.
We would know if it wasn't going. This is, everyone understands this, there could be some changes upcoming with immigration and visas and all of that, which. You know, could add additional complexities to Jason's recruitment uh, for staff members there.
Thank you. I was just confused by all the one point five, I was.
Yeah, it's.
I was not understanding how that was working.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any other, any other questions on uh, some classes? All right, salary estimates.
All I'm going to say is. Yep, typically, um, we talk to your finance behind closed doors. And then, um, we uh. We'll go into closed session later this year to discuss it more, more depth, but salary estimates. Um, we've been given guidance from finance for a start. Doesn't mean that won't change, but. We have something from, from our last meeting and at the beginning of January.
And all the contracts on June thirty?
All of them in June, uh, yes, most, all except my food services already renewed uh, through next year already. Uh, but we do have the other five contracts that are out, plus any other. Feels like it, but.
I know.
It's, yeah, it's been a while now.
So, just wanted the, the board, um, the new people on the board to realize that that is a conversation. Um, and we do go into closed session to discuss negotiations uh, prior to starting negotiations, then that kind of ties in, so.
Right, any questions on that? Right, uh, next item is board development and board staff, board, oh my goodness, I don't want to. Board self-evaluation.
Uh, would you like me to give some commentary?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, when we met for executive council, um, you know, we were just discussing. You always wanted to get better and improve and, you know, this idea of we're pleased but not satisfied and. Um, you know, we thought that it might be time for us to uh, do the board's self-evaluation again. Uh, we've done that like twice or three times. I think Eric Minx, maybe when you were board chair, we brought it up the first time and then we did another time and. What, you know, we, you're familiar maybe with this Gil Gilman from MSBA. And basically what it is, is, is they will, they, if, if we contract out with them. They will help facilitate and this will be done through like a board uh, work session. And they'll basically just give a survey to the board. It'd be like, I don't know, like a hundred questions, a lot of them. And it's, and it's kind of based around the, the standards of being a board member, so all of these different categories. And you kind of, each board member kind of says, you know, where they thinks we are, you know, on a rubric, one, two, three, four, or five. And it will, it will give us calculation of, you know, as a whole, where our board feels like we're really strong, doing well. And then there'll probably be some things that we come out and say, well, maybe those things are scoring a little bit lower. And then we have some discussion facilitation around that and, and then hopefully as a result of that. That will kind of flush out some focus areas for the board, what we wanna focus on. And that then can kind of lead us into this idea of uh, reestablishing board goals that. Uh, we haven't redone for over a year and a half now, and I was telling um, Chair Al that I think that. You know, we've had some very really similar goals the last like forever. And maybe it's time to move on and let's get some new goals, let's do some new things. Um, you know, um, but there's been some really strong uh, pieces that we've. Done as a result of that, right? The board mentorship program, um, is a, is a prime example of that. Um, just things that we, eh, eh, and I think that that's been really helpful. And I, I'm suggesting that we do that, um, that's a recommendation I have. And if the board is okay with that, that would just be a matter of contacting MSBA. And kind of negotiating what that might look like, and that would be something we'd work on. It's not, it's not like a scary thing at all. It's not like, and I got you, like, we're not, not like a test. This is our own feelings on how we think we're doing. And then that helps us flush out where we need to improve or where we should go, and that's, and then we also have some discussion. So that's one thing, um, that we talked about. Any thoughts, feedback for me on that?
It's a good idea.
Would that self-evaluation be the precursor to setting board goals?
Yes, it would.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just thought it would be foolish to set goals and then do it. Right, I think that this will, this will help us with our thinking. Um, the other piece that we talked a little bit about, that I want some feedback on is, you know. The, when we went through the pandemic, that kind of. Threw us for some loops in terms of how we were doing things. And we had gotten into a habit, and I think we were pretty happy with it, where we have the two, we'd have the two board meetings every month. But one was really focused on like board work session, study session, kind of taking one or two topics and. Having more dialogue and conversation on, you know, almost getting in the weeds a little bit on a certain topic. Um, and, and we would literally like just sit around the table, here, we want, uh, we want to have this. You know, big meeting, and it would, we would have very little board action, if any. We might have a consent agenda and a couple other small things. But it was just focused on, you know, whatever that topic is. And we also got in a, in a habit. Uh, we basically scheduled out the year, so we, yeah, and we focused on our district continuous improvement plan. In our big rock areas. So for example, you know, let's say September, work session would be student learning. And the, the work session would be really around curriculum, instruction, standards, learning data, some of those things, okay? And then the next month's work session might be on climate and culture, you know, so we might be talking about. I don't know, bullying in the schools, or, or how can we create, you know. Men, we might talk about mental health or, you know, whatever those topics might be. And then, then we may, maybe do multi-tiered systems of support, and we, we try to kind of focus and do more. I don't know, roll these up and, and discuss that, and then that, and then that other board meeting each month was uh. More of just a typical board meeting like this. There'd be a lot of board action. Um, but I, I don't, I don't think any way that we do the work sessions, we still have to do like informational items if we wanna keep the integrity of. Using things. So it'd be kind of like a combination of what we do now, we, you'd look at the, you know, the, the information items. And we might talk about them more, and then you get to that next regular board meeting. And they could, those maybe, the regular board meetings could be quick because you, you would have already had opportunities to look at it, discuss it, digest it. Have two weeks to a- ask questions, come back to that board meeting if you have additional questions, you could do that, and then it's action, we're voting on things.
Would the student showcases still fit into somewhere? I really like those.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that we still, we still could do boards, uh, board showcases, yeah, for sure. I don't think we would lose that. I, it was just us having a discussion at executive council and that we. We kind of fell back into a very traditional way of doing things, um. And if the board told me that you just like it as we've been doing it the last year or two, I'm okay with that. But I also just wanted to bring it up to the board that we did. You know, we were feeling pretty good about what we were doing. I think the pandemic came and, you know, we wouldn't even sit next to each other. You know, and then we just kind of fell back into.
Well, then it got to a point where we were doing it all online, so we weren't even in the building, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you, so are, are you recommending that we go back to that, than it sounds like, obviously? You would like to see that?
Yeah, I.
I think it sounds great.
I do. I think it was, um, we had more focused. Um, instruction and one thing, one of the workshops I went to, I think you were, you were in it. And the, um, Duluth Schools talked about their committee structures and all that. Um, and they talked about, uh, one thing I realized is, uh, we don't have. Like a teaching and learning or a curriculum committee like we used to. And with the focus on, I mean, student learning is like up here, um. I just think if we could do, you know, work sessions like that, that gives the ability of a whole board.
Yeah.
Um, to sit in and really dive in into some of those things, um.
And, and I'd probably be inviting, like for that example, uh, the teaching and learning department to come. Jessica would be here, maybe Andrew Preppenow, you know, we would be, and they would be doing lots of assisting and facilitating discussions. So it would be kind of taking that concept, you know, when the board moved to a real governance model, staying to this big picture, which is. I love it and I think it's best practice. You know, you, you go away from having like board members sit on every, you know, a little committee.
Right.
In the district, but there's an opportunity for you to kind of get a taste of the smaller committees, but it's just in a work session, um, kind of a setting. Um, if the board.
I think the board function would much better with this government, government, governance. Model that we've been using, because it wasn't like that when I first got. No, I mean, board members were getting into areas that they shouldn't be getting into, you know, so.
Well, I, you know, I, I tell you this all the time, I mean.
And I didn't like it at first.
I know you didn't.
But.
Yeah.
You know when I'm wrong.
You know, and I tell you all this all the time, I mean. If, if we expect best practices from our team members, it starts, it starts at the board level, we gotta set the tone and best practices of the governance. And uh, and, and you will see example after example across state and the country, um, when boards are dysfunctional. Um, it's not fun for anybody. Yeah, right, and you can just open up the, the newspapers and you can see examples of that every week, just in our state of Minnesota. But we need to stay on top of utilizing best practices.
There are quite a few boards that do the work sessions though, too, aren't they like that?
Yeah, a lot do, um, you know, um. Some board, you know, we, we do the two meetings a month, we, with a work session, or some people call it a study session and a meeting. There's a lot of districts that just do one board meeting a month, two, I mean, I think when you get into some smaller districts, you might just see one. Every board has the ability to do it differently.
So what's the main difference between our work session that we do now when we call it a work session versus?
Yeah, I think, I think that our, our, our meetings are kind of a hybrid of work session and regular board meetings every meeting. Like we do both. You know, I think we might just call, call it work session, but if they're both, what we're doing now is just a hybrid.
Yeah.
Um, this would, we'd have to be a lot more focused. Oh, how are you doing, guys? Good to see you. Are you here to uh, present on the uh. Respect sheet? Sweet, all right, well, take a seat and we'll, are more coming or is it just you two?
Oh, I'm not sure. I, there should be more, but I'm not sure if they're available.
Okay, that's fine. Um, go ahead, take a seat and we'll uh, we'll adjust our agenda here and we'll have you at the end. Of the meeting, if that's okay? All right, cool.
I would just say as a new board member, I think I would appreciate those um, sessions that you were describing. So that I can learn more about what's happening within the school district. Um, I still sit here today going, what am I doing to support that, like I can vote on these, but how do I really understand its implications? And what are we working to better in the district? And I don't, I can make some assumptions, but I don't have great answers to that. Um, so I feel like that learning opportunity and being able to speak more um, eloquently about what's happening in our district would be very helpful.
Those types of meetings too. Will allow us to maybe, for those who've been on the board for a while, to give maybe some history as to.
Yeah.
This issue is this way or this is this way because of. You know, this, not, this is the way we've always done, so we're gonna do it, but this is why this is.
It, it is interesting to, to listen to some of our veterans that have been on the board for a long time that have a history of the way it was. And I think they understand that that wasn't the. And I think they understand that that wasn't the best way to do things, and they, and they went through significant training. Um. For probably a couple of years, right? I know that we still had Dennis Cheese Grill my first year or two here, but I know he had been here a couple of years before that, so the work started before I got here. But the fear always is. Right? As, as the, uh, board members that went through that training. Leave the board. Right? You'll lose that history and that training, and I, I think our veterans have done just a really good job of. You know, trying to. Share their knowledge of what they learned with the new board members, but. You know, that might be something that we want to discuss, uh. You know, that might be a board, and a board goal, right? Through our evaluation, we might decide that, uh. And we want to do another training, uh, you know, all together on governance, um.
Well, we also have, did we always have the mentor program? Cause I know I've all learned. Just, that was.
I think you. I think you might have been the beginning of the mentor.
Start with the coolest, makes sense.
That's right, Sue mentioned it, yeah.
Alright, ended up with perfection right here.
Right there.
Right here.
So I mean, if, i- if I don't hear any opposition, I guess what I would like to do. Is to, to mock up a draft of, you know, what a, what a scheduled year might look like. Um. I think that we, we're gonna have all kinds of great intentions, uh, but it will be messy. I mean, there'll be some months that we have work session, but I, you know, some, something comes up that I need to have you vote. Um, cause we just don't have time to not have you do that. Um, so what, you know, we'll just have to do our best to get that information and have it all organized and scheduled. And then I would be bringing in more director level folks to these meetings too, so I'm sure they'll love me for that. That they get to come to more night meetings, so. But that's okay.
Then our, uh, the event was board goals, but you kind of. Talked about that already.
Yeah, I think that if, if we go through the, uh, board evaluation. Uh, we'll be able to flush out some of our. Our goals as a result of the information that I have.
Is everybody, um, on board then with the idea of. Letting Ben go ahead and try to set up a board self-evaluation and, yeah.
So would we do, we do the self-evaluation? Set the goals and then the workshop thing, um, that's just gonna be something that you guys try to get together and we give it a shot one day or?
Yeah, it's gonna take a little time to get that. I mean, we'll have to flesh out a draft, I'll present it to executive, um. Council, we'll bring it in front of this group. And then we'll have to determine like, when do we want to start that?
Right.
And kind of get that restructured going.
One good. Right. We will start, uh, our action items in with our first one being.
Hey, Jordy, thanks for coming.
Thanks for having me. Here to share some excellent news tonight as a result of the bond sale, so, yeah. Um, and will Emily show the report on the screen? Is that?
Yeah, Emily, can you hear us?
Yep, I can get it pulled up quick.
So we talked about, we've been talking about this for a while, starting, uh, probably last spring, I think, when we were, um, working on LTFM planning. And then the board approved the LTFM plan this summer, which included this bond issue. And then the bids came in, they were a little higher, so then we regrouped on that a little bit, resubmitted to MDE. And then kept watching rates and added a refunding component, which is really exciting. So. Refunding bonds are similar to refinance your home mortgage, except that you don't keep the money for your budget. You do have to. Pass it back to the taxpayers in the form of reduced debt service levies. So we'll let you know now how that all turned out. We took bids this morning, so if you'll go to the first page, Emily. Um, again, we're financing the facilities ma- maintenance. It's a health and safety or indoor air quality project at the high school. That was approved by the, uh, by MDE as part of your tenure plan. And then the current refunding of one of the maturities in your series two thousand fourteen A school building bonds. We went through the rating process, so by now Michelle is an expert at that. She talks to them pretty regularly and. Did an excellent job once again of representing you. So you got that nice high double A three rating affirmed as your underlying rating. And then as part of the Minnesota State Credit Enhancement Program, they assigned a separate rating at the double A one level. Which is one notch below what they have the state credit rating at. That's triple A, the highest that they get, which is great news. So that's very helpful to you also. We got nine bids. We like to see three, so seeing nine bids was very exciting. And the below bid, uh, was from Hilltop Securities out of Dallas, Texas, at a three point oh four. So, um, if you, there's a little bit of information on that page summarizes the results, but I think if we turn to the second page. We were thinking that we would come in, our estimate that we talked to you about, uh, was a three point five two percent. So getting three oh four was really great to see. Um, for the two different components, the facility's maintenance. Rate on that portion of the bond issue is a three oh three as compared to a three sixty six. And with the premium that we received, you can use that toward covering additional project costs, so we'll be depositing about thirty thousand more in the. Construction fund for the project. For the refunding component. The rate was a three point oh five as compared to the three point four seven that we had estimated. And so the savings is six hundred forty nine thousand five hundred dollars. As compared to the six ten oh sixty six that we were thinking that we might get. So all of that gets passed on to your taxpayers, so that's very exciting news, and we'll show you how that kind of plays out in, on your long-term plan too. We'll close on the bonds on February thirteenth, and that's when we can issue the call notice. For the two thousand fourteen A bond, so we will call those bonds on March twentieth then. We need to give. Uh, at least thirty days notice, so we're giving thirty five days notice. So I will go through the attachments. Um, the first attachment is the bid tab, and it goes on for two pages because of the number of bids that you received. So again, Hilltop Securities out of Dallas at the three point oh four, followed closely behind by Raymond James on St. Petersburg Ford at a three point oh nine. And then you got bids from New York, Minneapolis, Pittsburgh. Uh, Milwaukee, Denver, another one from New York, and then, uh, the high bid was. Stifel Nicolaus out of Birmingham, Alabama, at a three point two five six four. So even the high bid was lower than what we were expecting, so that's great to see. The next series of schedules are the exact same schedules that we had in the pre-sale report. They're just updated now with the results of the sale. So the sources and uses schedule is what we use to make sure that we have enough money to cover the project costs. For the high school project, indoor air quality project, and for the refunding, we need to have enough money to call those bonds. So that's the whole point of that schedule. On page four, attachments page four, the debt service schedule is for the combined issue, so this is the schedule that, uh. Um, Michelle will come from, but then we do have the two individual components, so the facility's maintenance on page five. Uh, page six shows the remaining maturities on your two thousand fourteen A issue. We have refunded. Some of the maturities already, but that two thousand thirty five maturity have a pretty low coupon. You'll see that the coupons on the. Early maturities are a three percent, but the twenty thirty five had a three point five percent. Um, so, uh, the next page shows the debt service, the new debt service schedule for the refunding component only. And then our favorite page, page eight, shows the savings over time. We're actually, uh, restructuring this. Um, principal so that we will be paying off the principal more quickly. Saving on interest costs and then eliminating it entirely from that two thousand thirty five year. Uh, the next page is the escrow account, so as I mentioned, we're gonna close on this bond issue on February thirteenth, so you'll be able to earn interest. In the escrow account until the call date, and we locked in at a nice high rate. Short-term rates are still relatively high on. Uh, on US government securities, so we locked in today at a four point four percent rate. On that escrow account, so that's helpful too, to the refunding savings. And then the detailed, uh, schedule with all of your existing commitments over time. Your lease levy, one, uh, remaining, uh, levy for that. The new bonds for the indoor air quality approach, project, and then the combined total. So the refunding savings shows up in the existing commitments. And because you're required to levy at a hundred and five percent of your principal and interest payments. The savings to your taxpayers actually exceed seven hundred thousand dollars. So seven hundred seventeen thousand oh ninety eight is the exact amount then that is, uh, the reduction in the debt service levies. So I think it's easiest to see then on the chart. You guys have seen the chart from us a number of times. And that shows your debt service, uh, and capital levies for taxes payable in twenty five. The new board approved bonds for the indoor air quality project. That purple slices the lease, the one lease levy that you have remaining. And then the orange shows how we, uh, restructured and saved, uh, money for your taxpayers. So again. Moving those principal payments up, paying off that, uh, debt more quickly. Still, um, providing some step downs in your schedule so that we can mitigate some tax impact if the. If the committee and the board, if the task force and the board decide to move forward with questions for your taxpayers next fall. We've got some, um, a reduction in taxes. To help mitigate what that tax impact would be, and we'll figure that into all of the information we put together. As Ben mentioned, we'll be. Talking to the task force next Tuesday. And now that we have the results from this sale, that will really help us then to kind of hone in on some of those numbers. So finally, you'll see those dotted lines where we're, uh, the dotted lines with, um. Blank in the middle are the debt service levies that we're eliminating. So that twenty thirty four. Um, taxes payable year would have financed the twenty thirty five maturity, and now that is completely gone. So really exciting, um, everything turned out better than expected. We do have the. Press release and the credit opinion that were issued by Moody's. And certainly I'm happy to address any questions you have related to report or anything included in the information that they provided to the district too. But really, um, great to have that double A three rating, uh, affirmed and, um. And to see the results with the lower rates a little bit more for your project cost, so kind of a win-win-win all around for your bond sale today.
Better just close the meeting now, guys. It's not getting better.
Oh, yes.
Never mind, we're good, we're good.
Yeah, yes.
That was great news. Uh, just out of curiosity question, I've been doing this a long time, but with the, um, press release. Do, do some districts that you work with, do they, do they release that to the press?
Oh, sure. You sure, you certainly can.
I don't know if we've ever done that.
Yeah, you certainly can, and that is, you know, gets published on Moody's. Moody's publishes it and it gets posted on what's called the Emma website on your behalf, the rating that you have, but yeah, you certainly. You certainly can feel free to communicate this information with your, uh, local newspaper or newspapers. You have. One local newspaper?
Yeah, we have one.
We just need to go with an explanation on what it is.
Yes, and in communicating the savings and how that works. Because often people think that you're just gonna be able to keep it and solve all your operating budget problems. And you aren't able to keep it to solve all your operating budget problems. It must be passed on to your taxpayers in the form of reduced debt service levies. So it doesn't. Make everything, uh, all rosy again from your general fund perspective, unfortunately, but great news for your taxpayers.
Good, yeah.
Great news for your taxpayers, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, that seems like something to punch out there.
You, so the Moody's rating, do you go through that every time you apply? So it's not every, good to keep every three years.
Cause every time there is a bond sale, we have to do that.
And they monitor that, so if, um, you weren't issuing bonds regularly, they would be, every time your audit gets submitted to them, they take a look at things. They can initiate, uh, what they call their surveillance process at any point in time, so your rating is in place while the bonds are outstanding. So if you aren't going to market and issuing more bonds, they would absolutely contact the district and just check up on things every once in a while.
Any other questions for Jordy?
And then you have a resolution, so I will stay for that in case there's any questions about that.
Right. Uh, is there a motion to approve the resolution for the general obligation? Facilities maintenance and school building refunding bonds?
So moves.
Alright, motion made by Melissa. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jen. Um, it is a resolution, so we will vote by roll call and we'll start with Scott.
Yes.
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 Yes. Alright, resolution passes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity to be of service to the district once again, and so glad that things out, turned out well, and we'll be. Available now to kind of start crunching through the numbers again with the new improved results, which will be really helpful.
Alright, our last, uh, item on our action agenda is the legislative platform.
Yeah, the, the board had an opportunity to review this. Uh, at last meeting, and we're asking you to approve this. At this meeting, I haven't had any, uh, further questions, although I know there was some, uh. We wanted to make sure that we had the Baldwin City piece. Is it fixed? Yeah, cause I think like all of you sent me that.
Well, it's an important thing.
Well, it, it is, it is. But you know, again, it, it's a point of pride for us, um, of course. Um, nearly all of our funds that we operate our school, uh, from are from, is from the state of Minnesota. Right? We're one of, just a small handful of school districts that don't have a voter-approved operating referendum. Where we receive additional dollars for, from our, uh, local property owners to operate our school. So that demonstrates that we've, uh, been effective and efficient in operating our schools. Um, but it, as you all know, it is extremely hard to do as inflation has increased. Um, and almost yearly. Uh, when we're doing our budget, we have about a three million dollar shortfall, and we continue to cut, cut and cut. And, uh, the, the funding system is broken. Um. And. There are the haves and the have-nots. There are many, uh, if, if we are three thousand dollars less. Per pupil than the average school district in Minnesota. Right? If we just were average, we would have ten million dollars more to operate at our district every year. And then the, the companion letter to this legislative platform. Um, I, I say right in there, we're not asking for special treatment. Right? If, if we, we just wanna have some fairness in, in the funding. And if, if we're three thousand dollars below the average, that means that there has to be many districts in the state that. Are three thousand above the average. Or some number above the average. Right? You have a haves and have-nots, and that largely is reflected in our legislative platform. As we're going up to ca- the Capitol to try and work with our legislators to fight for us. Right? Um, our legislators. Are, um. Last, the last couple of years, they didn't have a whole lot of power at the Capitol, um, so. It was, they listened to us, uh, but they didn't have the ability to get many bills through, um. Committee and those kinds of things. Now things will be different this year if they ever actually start doing their work. Um, but we're going to be up there talking to them more. And telling our story, right? Because our students in Princeton. Are no less important than any other student across the state of Minnesota. Your zip code should not determine the resources that you have available to educate your children. Now, um, I've been talking about this and talking about this, and it's hard for me to get people to listen. Because I would think that the people in our community would be just mad as heck about it. Right? I know you are, I am. Cause we're, we're, we have this challenge to operate and try and have the most high-quality, high, using best practices. Yeah, and, and have world-class education, uh. Compared to some of the districts. That have many more resources. We don't run around complaining about it a whole lot, but we need to tell our story. We can't just like, keep it a secret. So our, our legislative platform largely is, uh. Focused on, uh, funding. It's about safety of our, our, our students. There are some other, uh, components in there. Um, related to, um. So the, our priorities are related to ensure stable and predictable fair funding. Um, the second one is related to student safety. Uh, the next one is respect local control and reduce barriers, and I think that's something that as a school board. We realize that every time there's a new mandate from the federal level or the state level, uh, that takes away the authority. Of the school board to, uh, make their own policy. Right? Because we don't have the discretion to not follow state and federal law. So. We need to continue to tell them that no, no mandates, right? And certainly when you provide new mandates. We need to have some funding associated with that, because every single mandate. And certainly when you provide new mandates, we need to have some funding associated with that because every single mandate. Um comes with a cost. Right? So we're taking dollars that we should be allocating to other things to pay for the new mandates and things that we are legislated to do. And the last piece is related to expand educator workforce. Uh the teacher shortage is real. Uh we uh our HR, Jason can tell you all kinds of examples, but um we. Are having shortage in teachers. And they're getting harder and harder to find and there's less and less people going into the field. And uh is 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 difficult as things are for us. Right? Older, greater s- s- greater Minnesota. That is farther out from the metro than us has it much more difficult. Right? Um people use the the word crisis, um but I don't think we've seen anything yet. I really don't, and that's mostly because um. The uh there's just not as many people going into the field. For a lot of different reasons. So you know, that's another piece that uh we're talking to our legislators about. So uh again, thanks to the uh Public Engagement Committee uh for helping create these. I guess our priority items. And we put this together and we're hoping that you will adopt this so that we can share this publicly. Uh we can publish it and then we can also utilize that when we bring a delegation to the Capitol. Uh to talk to our legislators and we'll certainly be starting, I'll be starting to have, you know, a coffee with uh our couple of our local. Uh folks and then we'll be making some trips to the Capitol, talking to others, and then we'll bring our whole delegation from Princeton to the Capitol as well. And of course, we'll want to hopefully bring some students with us like we've done in the past. So I'll entertain any uh comments that you have. Uh if not, I'd ask the board to officially adopt this legislative platform.
Um we're gonna need to add Princeton Township. We have the city of Princeton, but then we also have the city of. Prince Township or Princeton.
Well, I think that's hard. Why don't you start naming one where you stop, where do you? But I I hear what you're saying with Princeton Township, cause that is literally.
So uh in that part that says we serve over thirty two hundred students from Princeton Zimmerman, Baldwin. Uh and surrounding townships of Glendarrado, Delville, Spencer Brook. Wynette, Bogus. Bogus Brook, Green Bush, Milo Blue, Blue Hill and Santiago. Yeah, we don't have Princeton Township in there. Yeah, that was an oversight. We'll get that, we'll get that in there before we uh. Before we publish that for sure. Thank you for that.
I'm going to accept the twenty twenty five legislative platform as president, or not as president, provided Princeton Township is added in that first order.
Second that. All right, motion's been made by Eric Mink, second by Melissa. Any comments or questions on the platform?
Looks good.
All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye. All right, the platform is approved. Um we have no additions to the agenda. Um you can see our list of. Yes, we have respect retreat.
Yes.
Come on up, guys.
I was just a fake out. We didn't forget.
Thanks for the reminder. I'm on to the hockey game, actually.
Uh Madam Chair members of the board, thanks for uh giving us a little bit of time. I asked Evan and Jacob to come and talk a little bit about. Uh what they did at the Respect Retreat. You're probably aware that uh the district had youth frontiers. Come in and do retreats at the intermediate school, the middle school and the high school. Uh but I thought these guys could tell you a little bit about what went on and what their role was and maybe takeaways that they had from the experience. So Evan and Jacob.
And they made like a very heavy focus on like do not leave any sophomores like behind. If you see one, if you see one in the corner or whatever, make sure that we're including them, so. It was very focused on reaching every student that was there, not just like. Few groups. It was focused individually and as a majority. And. So me, Jacob and two other link leaders were chosen to be. Uh a select few to just kinda help like give examples and stuff and like. Lead some uh activities for the sophomores and. Or a lot of it was games and stuff that would kinda help them learn about it, but then we got into more. Discussion and like. What it means to be respectful and it started to hit home more and just. I thought it was very important for the sophomores to learn about.
Um not much to add from that, but um I liked all like the discussions, like everybody got involved with it. And like it kinda got into more deep thought and like discussion and it was like. A deep thought where like everybody felt included and not everyone was feeling like a private conversation. Was it? And that was how a lot of the events were held there was everybody felt included and. Everybody joined in with all the games and stuff.
Well, you know, the the reality is, is you're in a s- you're in a school with over a thousand people, right? And you're in close proximity and you're all different, right? And you're there to learn. That's that's why we're here, right? But um there's there's barriers to learning, right? If if you have a significant amount of of bullying happening or or fighting or those kinds of things and people. Then if that happens to you and you go into your classroom, the teacher's trying to teach, it's very difficult for you to focus on on the teacher and learning, right? And it's just trying to, this whole idea of being respectful of others. Right? Treating others with respect and your classmates with respect and how that impacts everyone, right? Because so many of you, you've been uh many of you've been together for since kindergarten, right? Um and of course, there's been many students that move in and. You know, they meet new people and those kinds of things, but it's really, we talk a lot about, yeah, we need, we're an institution of student learning, but. There's prerequisites to learning. There has to be the the best conditions to learning to happen. And uh. You know, when there's not respect that's happening or there's derogatory comments or things that are uh. Bullying, for example, and those are things that we deal with a lot in schools. Um that, and especially with social media, now it it really is a distraction. And I tell our teachers all the time, I mean, they can give the most MVP lesson of of their life. But if a student isn't paying attention to them, they're not gonna learn a thing. So it's really about student learning. And uh you know, this is one way that we can have student experience to just try and come together and be more respectful. And I believe that you ended the day with uh all setting a goal, like end the day with your act of respect. And what that was gonna look like. And uh my hope is that that act of respect is is still living in some of the students that went through that.
Is this a required preaching? Some more than it sounded like it wasn't a preaching required to be there.
I think the goal was that it would be required, but a lot of kids didn't see the value in it, so they didn't come to school at all.
Is it something we can make required? Do you guys think it would be worth making?
As much as we can make anything required.
A day of school, yeah.
We had some parents choose to opt their kids out that day.
Is there anything that you think could act as a carrot to increase attendance on that day? Anybody?
That's a good question. Um we had not done it in the district. For a while and so I think some of the kids were unsure of what exactly the motive was and and we did our best to communicate. That to students and to families um. But we'd certainly wanna have better attendance in the future.
Well, what was your favorite thing about that day?
Uh I think at the end, they did like this little circle and had people come up if they were comfortable with sharing. Uh on what they would like to change. Uh whether they wanna respect others better, respect themselves or work on standing up for others. And I think that was very valuable, cause it kinda let all the sophomores be vulnerable and. You know all these people very well, so when you see them like get vulnerable like that and like. Share what they want to improve, it kinda helps you want to improve as well.
That's a big, that's a big thing, you know.
Well, that was probably my favorite part as well, but another favorite part would be um. We got into a group and we talked about what respect was and what kind of respect they want as like a person and. What respect really just means to them and yeah.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate it.
All right, now we have no additions to the agenda. There are motions to adjourn. Motion made by Eric Mink, is there a second? Second, nobody wants to leave. Jen, there's a second question. Um all in favor say aye.